Ubusutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings, strings for instruments, and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.
All right, we will call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which is open for the public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation. At the Lincoln Denified in the agenda, emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours prior to the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden. Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
All right, if you'll stand with us tonight, I will open us in prayer and then Councilmember Boomgarden will lead us in the pledge. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for the privilege to come and serve this community. Father, we just pray right now that you will just grant us wisdom, clarity, and that you'll be at the center of all things. We just give you the praise and glory in your name. Amen.
Please join me in saluting in class. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right, moving on to the agenda modifications. Please note that consent items on 11 and 12, which are the lighting and landscape maintenance district, will be voted on separately due to for some of the council reside. And staff has provided engineering reports for items on the consent calendar 11 and 12, LLMD 1 and LLMD 2 through 6. The website has been updated. Hard copies have been made available in the foyer. Okay, anything else with the agenda at this time? Okay, seeing none from the council, we will move on to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours to the prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. And repetitive comments may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We do have one written request, and that is, again, Mr. PR, Joel, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Well, this is my 10th time standing in front of you, and that would be approximately four and a half months of my time in use. I still am against the name of naming that park to the Addaris Baines, the reason we were told before. Today, I am to tell you the meeting, which none of you done anything accordingly. We had to set up a meeting with Mr. McIntyre, who wrote the report, and Mr. Chaffin. Now, I can probably only tell one report, the one meeting at this time because five minutes are allowed. Now, the meeting that we had was Roddy Timber, myself, Mr. McIntyre, and his assistant. Now, that was concerning the criteria that Mr. Mark Boomgarden as a mayor set up, and then it was all in favor. Now, my thing all along has been that Mr. Dedaris Baines have not met the criteria, period. Nobody listened. I hope if people are watching at home, they would understand that. Now, the meeting with Mr. McIntyre was after the hellos and everything, my first point of asking him was, who was this person? Our staff has received a request to name the park after Mr. Dedaris Baines. Why was not a name put on there? I know why, and I'll tell you if you believe in it. Mr. Carton Baines is the one who brought the name. Who is Carton Baines? He is the son to Mr. Dedaris Baines. He does not belong to the council. He does not belong to the staff. He is the supervisor of Santa County. He belonged, he brought the name to you. Nobody paid any attention. So my next question to Mr. McIntyre was, the criteria, that does Mr. Baines meet the criteria? We went through point by point, seven points, does not meet it. The eighth point on there is that you have to have a background check. Why? Where and how was the background check done? He said, well, City of Uba City Police Department did that. Fine, no problem. But he does not meet the seven points in there that has to be. Now, Mr. Chaffin said that it only has to be one, but, Mr. McIntyre, it has to be all. Who is right? Chaffin or McIntyre? I don't know. I'm just a citizen standing here and complaining. Now, after all that, we spent an hour, and I told them about the fight that I had with Mr. Dedaris Baines's family, from the time of the start to the finish of the start of that fight. They went in to file a report with the police department of Marysville. And guess what? They would not give a name who fought them. I find out, and I go back over to the police department to say, I'm the one who they fought. They wouldn't blame me. They said, there are seven or eight people that got a bloody nose or a black eye or a bump on their head. How could you do it? Hey, I did it. I was young and dumb. So I tried to file a report also. They said, well, they didn't give any name who beat them up. What does that tell you? So therefore, it went on. On the last meeting, Mr. Bulbear Sohul said that there might be a grudge that I'm against this. I do not hold grudges. As you and Mr. Sohul should know, the only person that holds a grudge is a loser. When we go out, play events, any athletic, the one who loses, he holds a grudge against the winner. I didn't lose, they did. Now, getting back to the criteria. Mr. McIntyre said, the department usually named this. Now, remember what I said. Usually names it the department. And I said, department did not name it. It was Mr. Carton Baines who named it. And he shook his head, yes. Now, with the criteria and everything, he's saying that you have to meet all of them, and Mr. Chaffin saying there are only one. Why? And therefore, you know, I don't think to go into another thing. If you can recall the first meeting that I was here four and a half months ago, and I told you the person that Mr. Dedaris Baines is, nobody believed it. Nobody said a thing. I told them that his mentor is Mr. Malik from BC, who is doing the same thing in BC. Now, just to let you know, Mr. Malik had been shot to death last Thursday, and the people are going saying, he got what he deserved. And that was the same scenario with Mr. Dedaris Baines when the tree fell on him. So you go from there, we're naming a park that has attachment or did have an attachment with Mr. Malik, we're telling the country of the world, hey, here was the terrorist that blew up the plane with 300-plus passengers. Thank you.
Thank you. As usual, we'll just refer this back to staff for the conversations continue to happen if anything arises. Mr. Chaffin, do you feel the need to make any comments at this time?
No, other than to note that at the meeting of September 21st, 2021, Mr. McIntyre made a presentation to the city council regarding the criteria. If you go back to the city's website and review his comments that were made, you will note that he specifically called out that the criteria were separate. And so I would just suggest, since Mr. McIntyre is not available this evening, that those who are curious can certainly go back to that video to refresh their memories of events. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. We will move on. I have three speaker cards. The first one is Mr. Dale Whitmore. If you'll state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
Hello, thank you. My name is Dale Whitmore, 503 Tulsa Court in Uba City. Just came tonight to discuss the lock gate at the end of Shanghai Bend Road, which prevents vehicle access to the Shanghai Bend Rapids fishing access. A few months ago, the gate located at the end of Shanghai Bend and adjacent to the Feather River was locked by the Uba City Public Works Department. This gate has been open for public vehicle access to the Shanghai Bend Rapids for many decades. The distance from the lock gate to the rapids is nearly a half mile. There are many people who cannot walk that far for fishing access. Before the city makes a decision affecting recreational access to the Shanghai Bend Rapids, should consider the effect of the decision upon public access to and use of the river, and attempt, so far as feasible, to avoid or minimize any harm to that interest. I think you've all got a copy of the letter that I produced, and I'm just asking that the gates be reopened with vehicle access restored to how it has been for the past several decades for the enjoyment of the public. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Whitmore, thank you. We've got two other people want to comment on the same thing, so we'll go ahead and take their comments first before any referral or anything. Mr. Frank Zitschatner. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Frank Shatner. I'm from, live on 1154 Santa Barbara Way. I came this evening to support Dale Whitmore and his position to open up that gate. Since COVID, I just want to add some additional comments. Since COVID, the interest in outdoor activities and recreation has increased dramatically. I think many people are aware of that, to the point that many fishing and tackle companies can hardly keep up with the interest in particularly this fishing side of things. So I think that's just another point that supports the idea that we should open access and keep access open to Shanghai Bend, which happens to be one of the most popular fishing spots on the entire Feather River. Thank you for allowing me to make my comments.
Thank you, sir. And then the last one is Mr. Frank Coats. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Francis Coats, 3392 Camanito Avenue. Basically, what Dale and Frank said, the maybe adding that it actually is a legal requirement that prior to interfering with public access to navigable water, you're supposed to consider the effect of that decision on public access and use of that navigable water, and you're supposed to refrain from interfering with access when feasible, to the extent feasible, and you're supposed to do this in a public, transparent way so that the public can participate in the decision. It shouldn't be made by an administrative official, one of your employees, without the public having a chance to participate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Langley, because we're just finding out about this ourselves tonight, or I know I am, is this something that you and your team can follow up with these gentlemen? I'm sure there's other anglers out there that probably have similar questions, or how do, how would you like to handle it, Ms. Langley?
It looks like Ben is queued up to say something, but yes, Ben will follow up with these, these gentlemen.
Yes, absolutely. This is, it's an issue that's been around probably ever since the spoof work and the levy got going and really kind of raised its head. And so there's access for walking, there's access for biking, and it's not a city gate. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on right there between efficient game easement, state property, and LD1 responsibilities. And the status is, is that it's not a city lock. And if it is, and if a lock is placed on there, I'll have that removed. But there is, there is definitely, there's a strong opinions on either side because of the vandalism, because of the dumping, because of the fires that happened at that dead-end spot versus the access for ultimate access in the state in the right. And so it's not a city gate, and if there's a city lock on there, I'll have it removed tomorrow. And I'm happy to follow up with Mr. Whitmore and look at potential options. We're always open for the city to help be, you know, come to, you know, collaborate to come to an answer possibly on how to help make that area safer, but also keep access. So I'll reach out to him and make sure we follow up.
I appreciate that. Does that help you, gentlemen, this evening? Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a quick question, Ben. If not a, not a city gate, not a city lock, who locked it?
You know, so I don't know.
Okay.
But I would, but I would say at the same time, it might be a public employee. We go down there and pick up, we go down and pick up mattresses all the time. We coordinate with Saylove, and there's a lot of confusion on who owns what back in there along that responsibility area. And so, yeah, but I wouldn't be surprised between seeing LD1 locks, sort of state locks, and then, hey, guess what? They usually only last a month before they get cut. And so, but I will, I'll check that out.
All right. Thank you for that. And just for what it is worth, the record, I do support their efforts to keep public access to fishing, public access to fishing. I don't, I don't think that because a bunch of clowns want to dump mattresses and start fires that these folks have to suffer, my opinion. So hopefully, we can have a deeper conversation and find other, excuse me, other solutions, but not a city gate or lock, but that's how I feel about this. And thank you for the letter, Mr. Whitmore.
Yeah. Any other comments for, questions for Mr. Moody from the council? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moody. Thank you, gentlemen, for bringing that to our attention, and I trust that it's in good hands now. Any other comments from anyone here tonight that for items that are not on the agenda? Any other comments from anyone tonight that's not on the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, we will go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of this council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. And please note that items 11 and 12 have to be voted on separately tonight. So with that, do we have any, first of all, any questions from the council on agenda or consent items 2 through 10? Okay? Is there any public comment on consent calendar items 2 through 10? Any public comment? Okay? Coming back to the council for action on consent calendar items 2 through 10.
The mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar items 2 through 10.
I have a motion from Councilmember Espandola and a second from Councilmember Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, so 2 through 10 carries. We'll go to agenda item 11, which is the Uba City Landscape District Maintenance District number one, which is Stabler Lane Garden Highway Area Resolution of Intent.
Through the mayor, I live in this district and must recuse myself from the decision.
All righty, sir. Okay. All right. Is there any questions concerning agenda item 11 from the council? Any public comment on agenda item 11? Any public comment? Hearing none, back to the council for action.
Through the mayor, I move that we approve item 11.
Motion. I have a second. A motion from Councilmember Espandola, a second from Councilmember Harris. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We will move on if we can get Councilmember Boomgarden. We will move to agenda item 12, Uba City Lighting and Landscape District Maintenance Districts number two, three, four, and five, Town Center, 69 subdivisions throughout Uba City, and Uba City Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District number six, which is a commercial district resolution of intent.
The mayor, I need to recuse on this one, as I live in that area.
As well as I do. I live in one of those areas. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, you have the mic.
Okay. Thank you. So agenda item number 12, I'll open it for any public comment or questions at this point. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor, through the vice mayor.
Thank you.
Acting as mayor. Move to approve item number 12.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden and a second from Councilmember Espandola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will now move to business item, agenda item 13, which is community sponsorship request, and that will be presented by our city manager, Ms. Diana Langley. Do you have the floor?
I need to, through the mayor, I did not clearly state, can we separate 13A, 13B? Because I need to recuse myself on 13A.
All right, we can take them as separate, separate items. And so we will take 13A, and if you will state for the record why you're accusing.
I will, I will recuse myself on 13A. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I'd like to know why.
That's, that's the question. You do, you have to state why you're recusing.
I work closely with AHA on many activities, and I recused myself at the previous meeting as well.
Okay. All right.
To be consistent and with integrity, thanks.
Ms. Langley.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It feels like it's been a while since I've been right here, so it's good to see you tonight. So before you is the community sponsorship request. So for a little bit of background, in January of this year, council amended the policy, but the general intent is that the public will receive some intrinsic cultural, economical, educational, or entertainment value from the event. The review, the policy states that staff will bring forward applications on a quarterly basis, so generally in January, April, July, and October. And the eligibility criteria includes events or programs providing a benefit to Uba City residents, fundraising events for nonprofit organizations that primarily serve Uba City residents, events or programs that contribute positively to the recognition and image of Uba City, events or programs that are open to the general public, and organizations that demonstrate that they can meet the necessary requirements of the agreement. So the first request is from the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, and I know we have some representatives here tonight, and Margaret Fernandez, who submitted the application. And so the, under their request, they're proposing to provide resources for Hispanic businesses, such as training to enhance their businesses and fiscal management, staff development, technical support, and leadership training, host hiring events that provide bilingual staff to assist in interviewing skills, and host career events to introduce various career opportunities, the training necessary for those careers, and provide financial assistance. So at this point, I'm going to skip the slide related to Uba Sutter Arts and get to the fiscal impact. So in this fiscal year, 2223 budget, council approved $15,000 for community contributions, which the AHA request would fall under community contributions. What council has generally discussed is having the money available on a quarterly basis so that as you review applications on a quarterly basis, you have funds available to allocate. So for this quarter, there would be $3,750, as we have not received any other applications for this quarter. And the recommendation would be to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement of up to $6,000 to advance Hispanic heritage in our local communities through community action, educational enhancement, and economic development. The reason that we put $6,000 is that that's the amount that they submitted for their application. I know that the mayor has had a meeting with Margaret and other representatives from AHA. This doesn't prevent them from coming forward with another application next quarter, but in regards to tonight, it would be evaluating based upon the money available for this quarter. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure that Margaret would be happy to come up and answer any questions as well.
Any questions from the council?
Before we discuss funding, is, is the item B, is that the coming out of the same community contributions, or is it coming out of community events?
I would recommend that that come out of community events.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right. Ms. Fernandez, would you like to make some comments as you're the requestee?
Thank you. Actually, I do want to thank the city council for, back in April, we were awarded $1,100, which we will use thoroughly. And I also appreciate being invited to reapply not only this quarter, but the following quarter. We have been working with our newly-found Business and Economic Development Committee, and we have some fabulous ideas. And the 3750, we have allotted for purchasing Microsoft Office license as well as QuickBooks license because those seem to be the two main things that a lot of the Hispanic business owners don't have and also need training on. Also, we want to spend that money on very, very part-time staffing. That would help with the communications, managing files, and now orientating new members. And then thirdly, we want to have a specific job fair, interview fair, bilingual, and also a career fair that will show what other opportunities are out there and where they can find them that will help them in their, in their language. But I just wanted to make a point that what the alliance goal is, we believe that the Hispanic community has been an underserved community, though it's a big chunk of this area, and we just want to be the representative to guide them and to offer them the services through our really wonderful partnerships that we've created. We know we partner with the Uba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, the Uba Sutter EDC, the Uba Sutter Arts Council, as well as the California Hispanic Chamber. And with those four, right now, those four very strong partnerships, we can really kick off. And we're still also going out there and creating new partnerships. But I just wanted to say again, thank you for the opportunity, and call me anytime you have any more questions or any follow-up.
All righty, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Okay, bringing it back to the council. First, I would like to say thank you for taking the time the other morning to, to meet with myself. And I think that, I think that helped us a long way, just understanding the process and, and everything. So, but thank you, guys. That, I think it was a valuable hour that we spent. So bring it back to the council for any other comments or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend the item A, adopting a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship
I'd like to amend the item A, adopting a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement of a full quarterly allotment of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to advance Hispanic heritage in our local communities through community action, educational enhancement, and economic development.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Boomgarden, I have a second by the Vice Mayor Wade Kirchner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. If we could get Councilmember Espandola to come back out, we will go to thirteen B.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Um, speaking around the subject of recusals, on item A, for AHA, Councilwoman Espandola recused the explanation she gave, she works closely with them. That brings a concern for me, for item B, for Uba Sutter Arts and Culture, because I'm on the board of directors. So, by working closely, I'm not sure what that means. If it means you receive money from them, it makes sense, and I can stay here, but I'm not, I'm kind of confused as to whether maybe I should recuse, or if I, I don't know. That's my...
We will ask Mr. Chaffin to answer that, instead of giving an armchair quarterbacking response. Mr. Chaffin.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris, do you receive any financial remuneration for, uh, sitting as a board member?
I do not. No, I do not.
Did you submit the application this evening?
No.
Were you co-signing to the application?
No.
Uh, under those conditions, you are probably okay, though, again, I'm always reluctant to do triage, uh, conflicts issues, but you're probably okay, but if you feel uncomfortable, you certainly can recuse yourself.
I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable at all, I just want to make sure that we're doing things correctly, um, that's all. I wasn't sure what work closely meant.
Let me add to that, I did check with our city attorney prior to, months ago, assisting with the application, and I was part of that discussion, so I felt it was important for me to have not be considered anything, you know, um, conflict of interest or anything, so that's why I recused myself.
And that further information makes, makes it all
Okay.
clear, so thank you very much.
Thanks, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, we're ready, proceed. Ms. Langley.
Alright, and so the next application is from Uba Sutter Arts and Culture, and David Reed is here tonight, thank you for being here. And they have a mural marathon project proposed, which would be five artists would have forty-eight hours to complete twenty by twenty-four foot murals on the Church Street side of the Sutter Theater Center for the Arts. And they would host an art festival on the street in adjacent parking lot with a total cost of thirty thousand dollars. They were requesting matching funds against the grants previously required. Their total request was ten thousand dollars. In addition, utility box murals, they're proposing five hand-painted mini murals on Uba City Traffic Signal Utility Boxes that cost a thousand dollars each. Here is the wall along the theater that the five murals would be proposed, and then on the right-hand side are previous utility boxes that have been painted with the assistance of the, um, Uba Sutter Arts and Culture. In terms of the fiscal year budget, council approved ten thousand dollars for the entire year, so in terms of this quarter, it would be twenty-five hundred dollars. And the recommendation would be to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from Uba Sutter Arts and Culture of up to ten thousand dollars for the support of a mural marathon and utility box mini mural event in Uba City. With that, I'm, I can answer any questions, or I'm sure David Reed would be happy to answer questions as well.
First, is there any questions from the council? Hearing none, Mr. Reed, would you like to say a few words as the requestee?
Good evening, David Reed, Executive Director of Uba Sutter Arts and Culture, now in our forty, forty-first year as the local representatives to the California Arts Council. We, we understand budget, budget, budgetary restraints, we live and breathe that ourselves, of course. Uh, any, anything that you're able to contribute would be much appreciated. We thought about getting the utility box murals back on track, we've lost a couple, as you know, to accidents, most recently, the very popular Rooster over at Winco, and prior to that, a year, year and a half ago, the, uh, the Canadian Geese mural near Uba City High School, the Honkers Utility Box, so maybe at a minimum, we can consider restoring those, once, I'm not sure about Winco, if the box is back in place yet or not, so, uh, one way or another, we're going to do a mural marathon, if not this year, next year, of course, that mural is gone now. We had received a grant for that some years ago, we had to resurface that entire side of the theater, uh, about a year ago, prior to our reopening, so, um, anything you can do is always appreciated, we'll put it to good use, and we really love the fact that now we have a home base in Uba City with our beautiful Sutter Theater Center for the Arts, so thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other comments from the public? The other comments from the public? I'll bring it back to the council, and, uh, Mr. Reed, I'll just start it as I did the others, thank you for all the work the Arts Council's done down there, it's, uh, it's nice having, uh, another theater and different entertainment coming to our downtown area, so, uh, I just want to say thank you. Any other comments from the council? Then we'll entertain a motion.
Uh, through the mayor, I move to approve the, to adopt the resolution, or actually to modify the resolution, approval of monetary sponsorship request for the Uba Arts and Culture up to twenty-five hundred for the support of the mural marathon utility box mini mural event in Uba City.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Espandola.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Boomgarden. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Langley, and congratulations to both your groups. We will move on to agenda item fourteen. Wastewater Treatment Facility Effluent Discharge Outfall Diffuser Project, try to say that three times, the final design amendment, and you are not Mr. Moody.
Apologize. He's gone to the bullpen.
Gotcha. Kevin, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and members of our city council. Um, item fourteen before you tonight, uh, is requesting amendment to our contract with Jacobs Engineering to complete the final design of our wastewater, um, treatment facility outfall diffuser project, yes, it's a mouthful, and it's always nice to go after Diana here, so I apologize in advance for my presentation not being quite as polished as hers. Okay, so, just a quick overview of the project, I know council has been extensively involved in, with this project, including advocating for funds at both the state and federal level, so I know you all are very familiar with this figure, um, and feel free to have me fast forward if I needed, need to. Historically, our wastewater treatment facility located in, red, can I point with this? There's our wastewater treatment facility in red at the top of the figure, um, it's had two options to dispose of treated effluent, the primary option has been to discharge directly into the Feather River. Right here near Shanghai Bend, there's the existing diffuser. That's been the primary option to dispose of, uh, treated effluent via diffuser pipe, um, and, uh, this is no longer an option for us at this time, uh, since the state is allowing, uh, since the state will, uh, not allow us to utilize this location, since the erosion of the falls has left our outfall diffuser pipe exposed on dry land. The secondary option for disposing has been to these effluent disposal ponds over on the east side of the river. Those ponds are problematic in that they're limited in capacity, uh, they require routine monitoring and maintenance, and they're vulnerable to damage during flood events, uh, which can leave them, uh, unusable for extended periods of time. So, the city has been actively studying a, a potential replacement options for the existing diffuser, and the preferred project is to install a new pipeline, which would be roughly in Garden Highway, um, from Shanghai Bend area down to about half a mile south of Berry Road, that's a length of about, uh, ten thousand feet, um, that's the most stable area of the river in our area, um, that's the preferred location, and, uh, so about two miles of pipeline, and the pipeline would need to be about forty-two inches in diameter. So, we did not arrive at that decision overnight, um, as you can see, the city has been studying replacement options for the existing diffuser since two thousand eleven, when the Shanghai Falls eroded, and in twenty eighteen, council made a substantial commitment to the project by awarding a contract to CH Two-Mill Engineers, which is now Jacobs, uh, to provide the services shown. Jacobs has completed the preliminary design, and they're well underway to completing the environmental permitting, uh, the right-of-way acquisition is also in progress, and, uh, they've completed about ninety percent of the final design. Okay, this slide shows the original contract amount, and then various amendments that council has approved to date. With the original contract amount, I want to point out that Jacobs' original proposal was for about three point eight million dollars, however, the city decided to postpone approximately one million dollars worth of the original scope of work that we are now requesting to move forward with tonight. Amendment number one was to perform some additional surveys in the river bottom, um, the channel itself, and to also, um, perform some sediment bed transport studies, uh, to help assist with determining that most stable location of the river, which, uh, resulted in the alignment that was shown previously. Um, amendments two and three, uh, those, those allocated approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars of, um, final design budget to basically, um, what happened is we got the thirty percent design cost estimate, and it was about a, up to a thirty-five million dollar project, so we wanted to hit pause on the design and basically look at alternatives to the treatment process at the treatment facility, to see if there was a better use of public funds than running this pipeline. And then amendment number four was presenting to council the results of that treatment, uh, study, and basically determining that, uh, council agreed with staff's recommendation to move forward with the pipeline project, and amendment four, uh, basically reinstated that three hundred and forty thousand dollars of budget transfers that we'd made, um, and then also authorized about five hundred and sixty thousand to kick off the final design of, uh, effort, um, basically that one million that I mentioned earlier that we had not programmed, the, that was part of, um, the five hundred and sixty thousand. Um, and then, as you can see, we are requesting about eight hundred and thirty thousand tonight for amendment number five, which would bring the total contract amount to about four point seven million. Okay, so what, what do you get for an extra eight hundred and thirty thousand, and why are we asking for that amount tonight? During the design process, the city, uh, requested several design changes, uh, that caused our consultant to have to redesign portions of the project. These include, included relocating the surge tank at the, at the wastewater treatment plant to an area of the plant that, uh, became available to us that made more sense. We also performed some additional potholing in Garden Highway, which we expect to recoup some of that cost during construction. We changed, we have to change the bifurcation station, which is at Shanghai Bend, where the pipeline will start, it, it was originally scoped as an above-ground, just chain-link fence or decorative fence, uh, facility, we're going to have to put that below ground now, and it's going to have to be structurally engineered, uh, for, for that. We're also relocating a significant portion of the pipeline out of Garden Highway and into, uh, paralleling the levee behind some of the orchards at the request of a landowner, um, once we got into the right-of-way negotiations, we had to change that alignment. We also evaluated, uh, several pump station modifications to try to figure out the, the best configuration, um, and then additional services identified, um, we'd like to have our consultant help us with the SRF loan application, um, we feel like that would put, position us very strongly for the, uh, that grant. We also have, uh, some pump station physical modeling that we need to do, instead of spending a bunch of money on, on building a new wet well and so forth, we're going to do some modeling to verify that, uh, we'll meet all the hydraulic standards, and then the agencies are requesting that we do some, um, some extensive, uh, bank stabilization efforts, um, instead of just dropping riprap in, we're going to have to, uh, do some bioengineering on that. Okay, this isn't directly related to the, the approval tonight, but I just wanted to give council a quick update on project schedule and the costs. This slide shows that, um, if all the funding were secured, and all the permits are not delayed, we would anticipate, uh, completing the final design next April. We, uh, would then probably hopefully receive the permits in June, advertise for bids in July and August, award the contract in September, and we'd expect the construction contract to last from October twenty twenty-three to December twenty twenty-four, and then we've got some testing and startup. That's, that schedule represents the best case scenario. Uh, the construction cost estimate as of last month is about twenty-five million, that's up about six million dollars from when we last reported in July of twenty twenty. The level of accuracy of this estimate is expected to range from about twenty-three to twenty-nine million. The soft costs are now about six point three million, which is up about one million from last July, or July twenty twenty. When you add that six million into twenty-nine, we're still looking at about a thirty-five million dollar project. We've also submitted a, um, SRF pre-application last month, uh, we've been assigned a manager for our application and had a, a very productive meeting, actually, this afternoon, I think all of that puts us on track to submit our final application by December, and, uh, that would keep us in line for potential funding during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four funding cycle. So, to recap, staff is requesting about eight hundred and thirty thousand for amendment five to complete the final design. We have budgeted, uh, for this request through the CIP budget process, and we have about two and a half million available in the CIP account. Council's alternatives, uh, we, we could postpone the final design of the new outfall, uh, have to keep in mind that in doing so, it would present some operational risks, uh, associated with using the effluent ponds, and also the state is monitoring our progress on this new outfall as it relates to our discharge permit. So, staff is recommending council adopt a resolution to award amendment number five to the professional service agreement with CH Two-Mill Engineers, Inc., to complete final design activities with, at, for the wastewater treatment facility effluent discharge outfall diffuser project, including new scope of work tasks identified from the design permitting and easement acquisition activities, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment following approval as to form by the city attorney with the finding that is in the best interest of the city. So, with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, hearing no questions at this time, is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay, coming back to the council for, uh, action or question?
The mayor?
Uh, city attorney, do I have to, uh, read all that through that again, or can I do it by just motion?
Just, uh, one motion, just the doctor's staff's recommendation.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept, uh, agenda item fourteen as stated.
Okay, I have a motion.
Through the mayor, may I have further discussion on this prior to the motion?
We can.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the team for putting this together, what a, um, an aggressive work of a timeline in such a short period of time, because this is no easy task, as you can tell based on the schedule that you've put together, um, and the two points that, um, Kevin, that you covered were extremely important, um, this, the discharge permit, which is a, a serious part of this work that we need to get done for, um, the outfall diffuser, and, um, I'm glad to hear that you've met this afternoon in moving forward with the SRF, um, funding possibility, right? In talking with the state or federal reps, um, I'm always asking for the funding to be considered a grant fund, not a revolving loan, even though the loans are really low interest for, for our city, but, um, I would certainly hope that we can find a way to get a grant, but I think, have to commend the team for, for putting this, this, um, project in, in amount of probably, what, three week, three months, quickly regrouped and finish, and, and just finished another grant and submitted already, that's a lot of work, a lot of work, so, um, thank you so much for doing that, and I appreciate, I, I certainly appreciate all this that you're doing, and certainly... I, I certainly appreciate all this that you're doing and certainly trying to help out with funding for all of us here in the city. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion on the table to have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Kirchner, a second, council member Escondola. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, sir. We're gonna go on to agenda item fifteen, which is the twenty twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and twenty twenty-one Action Plan Amendment. Now it's Mr. Moody. You have the floor, sir.
All right, so my favorite subject, one of my favorite subjects here. So um, the Community Development Block Grant, it's a um, it's a funding source with the city being an entitlement agency um, that we regularly um, deal with. And so, um, this is one of the substantial things that um, we do each year is, is work through our allocation and how to distribute it. So, so good evening, good evening, and uh, I'll work through this here. So um, so a little background for, for a quick refresher is the city is an entitlement jurisdiction. We receive annual federal formula grant funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The purpose of the C D B G is to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment and expand economic opportunities primarily for low and moderate income persons. So um, that's the key, key word, um, and one of the key definitions. And so it's to benefit low and moderate income as defined and then aid in preventing, um, the prevention, elimination of slums or blight and meet a need having a particular urgency to alleviate emergency conditions. And so um, this definition um, changes slightly based on um, inflation and, and the status of our area. And so low income is fifty percent or less of the area median income. And moderate income is less than equal to or less than eighty percent of the area median income. And that area median income, it's always a little bit um, subject, i- it's, it's on a table. And then you got, you have the fed, how the feds define it and then how the state define it. Um, but where we're at this year is that it's, it's seventy-five thousand. So really we're trying to help folks that, in neighborhoods that make um, sixty thousand dollars or less a year for a family of four. So that's a family of four making sixty thousand dollars or less. This year, the city received six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars through the um, C D B G program year. It fluctuates. Um, the last few years, I've seen it at the six hundred and seventy-five, six fifty, down to six fifteen, but we've, the last few years, it's been floating around that range. There's some stipulations as far as how it gets divvied up. Um, there's a maximum of twenty percent of um, allocation for administration. We're proposing fifteen percent. A maximum of fifteen percent can be used for public services. That's um, i- it's defined as where there's no um, not a tangible product at the end, this public service. Typically, historically, we've used it for homelessness activities. Required, and then there's a required um, to direct a minimum of seventy percent to the funding low moderate income person households. Funding is to be spent within the program year. So that's, that's one of the, the stipulations that um, is always, um, it creates a lot of work um, for, for staff is that it's, it's tight money. The money needs to be spent this year um, by June thirtieth of, of the following year. Um, and, or you start jeopardizing um, future allocations. So here's a quick flow chart, um, how it runs through. Um, basically what we're looking for after the public hearing tonight, we would, um, with approval, it would go to this, to HUD forty forty, for a forty-five day approval window. After we, after the local HUD rep, so let me get this right, submit application to HUD with a forty-five day approval window, window. Then they'll send it to um, as of August sixteenth, they need to send it into the um, August sixteenth, action plan should be completed by city and sent to HUD. So we have, uh, August first is our goal to get it into HUD, so we stay on target for our timeline this year. And then with that, once we get approval, we'll work with the sub recipients and then work out contracts so that they then have until next June thirtieth to spend the money. So um, so Cliff Notes as we work through this is that we had uh, twenty applicants um, with over um, one point six million dollars in requests for that six hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then when you, when you whittle it back, um, there, there was a pot of money that, that was needed to divvy up. And so there was a um, there was a um, ad hoc committee where there are some meetings with some discussions about, about that with some staff review as far as eligibility and, and some priorities based on, on need. And so what, where that landed is thirteen projects. Um, that, that I'll work through real quickly here and then I could definitely dive into any specifics um, based on council questions. So prog- program administration, that's fifteen percent. And so we put that in the budget. Um, many years, we don't reach that actual use. And, and what we usually do is then carry it over the next year into a project um, where we get, then throw it back into the pot. But we take fifteen percent um, for the budget, for administration support. So you, you have a homeless consortium and we're, we're um, we're basically with all of these, this is what staff recommendation is. But with that, there is opportunities for changes. Um, but there's been a lot of thought and priorities on, on what those applications were for. Minimum amounts and maximum amounts and what their programs offer. So with that, fifty thousand dollars for Southern Uber Homeless Consortium, Plazium for seventy-seven hundred, Habitat for Humanity, ten thousand, Freed, twenty thousand, Uba Center Cleaners Food Bank, one hundred thousand, Uba City Community Services Senior Center for ADA Bathroom Improvements, eighty thousand, Uba City Community Services, San Brandon Park Safety Improvements, fifty-five thousand, Uba City Fire Department Station One, Emergency Messaging Marquee and ADA Access Bathrooms, seventy-four thousand, seven twenty-five. A Uba City Cleanup Reserve, and so this is the uh, abatement of illegal um, refuse vandalism and damage in blighted areas for forty-five thousand. Uh, a, and here, a couple new programs here. Um, Uba City Public Works Sewer Lateral Repair. Thirty-five thousand dollar program for um, in, in the low income designated areas um, to provide a, a fund to help repair sewer laterals. And then also a sidewalk repair assistance program. So if there's damaged sidewalk in those areas, the owner's responsibility, if they're in those areas, they could then qualify for um, the program. And then a hundred and sixty-seven thousand and change for um, a capital improvement project that um, for ADA improvement sidewalks at various locations around town. And so in addition to the, the C D B G allocation, we're requesting a hundred and forty-five thousand from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty owner occupied housing rehabilitation that was unexpended. And so this is some money that's old money that we need to get off the books. Is that we're requesting that money be put, i- i- um, we authorize it to be transferred and that's part of the allocation that we're asking for tonight. And so, you know, and the reason that money's there be, with it, it really comes down to the economy. Um, there's been several loan payoffs on existing homes that we've had because of the low interest rates. Um, and then there, it just program management transition with R H A and, and how to get um, get, get that money used. And so i- it's been difficulty with the housing, the cost of housing and the program requirements to utilize that money. So that's why we're, we're requesting that, let's take this money before we run into problems where they get too old, put it in and, and allocate it this year. And so with that, I recommend items A and B is presented and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Right, uh, does the council have any specific questions for Mr. Moody before we uh, go to the public hearing, Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Ben, just, just out of curiosity, we received two requests from some very worthwhile agencies today, Hispanic Advancement and Uba Center Arts and Culture. Both of, both organizations do serve underserved communities and low-income communities. And, and reading some of the criteria here that we're getting you some C D B G money. I'm wondering if it might be able to be articulated, if it's legal anyway, to maybe tap into this, even if it's just twenty-five hundred dollars each, to help those um, agencies help out some of the low, low mod folks.
Definitely, definitely so. And, and so there has been some preliminary discussions and talk about application periods and the new period coming through and then just really defining that scope, so then that way it fits. So, so there's um, and staff's willing to work with them to do that. I think there, there's probably an opportunity for that to happen. We just need to really define what their product is and then how um, it accounts to the low, medium income folks.
Uh, yeah, okay, good. I'm glad that we can have an opportunity for some discussion there because we can definitely, if we, if we're able to help them out, I, I guarantee they'd be willing to target Yeah. the efforts for that. So thank you.
Through the mayor.
If I can just follow up real quick for a little clarification because as city manager said, I met with AHA the other morning for about an hour and that was part of it. And I know that they are planning on attending next year's workshop in January, February. Because they didn't quite understand what we were trying to explain to them at the last, the last meeting when they got the eleven hundred. But I think we're gonna probably have multiples uh, come from them next year.
It sounds like you're already ahead of me then, so thank you very much.
No problem, sorry about that.
At least we're on the same page.
Yeah, we're on the same page, all three of us. Um, the timeline, they must
Not allowed to talk, so you know.
Yeah, why, listen, chat, right, let's chat. Um, you know, the timeline was missed for this year, the opportunity. But I think um, it was very nice of you, mayor, to meet with the AHA leadership. I think that's very much appreciated in helping um, clarify some of the processes as you have stated. Um, I love the idea that you mentioned and that's exactly, I think, the kind of work we need to do in the future. It's just, I think they missed the opportunity or, and I know our city team really does a really hard job to try to notify people to apply within the time scope. Um, but we can always do better, so.
All right, if there's no other questions, then we will go forward and open the public hearing. So, public hearing to receive comments on the C D B G twenty twenty-two Annual Action Plan and the twenty twenty-one Action Plan substantial amendment is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public during this public hearing? Do you have any comments from the public during this public hearing? Okay, hearing none, uh, no comments on this issue, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for action. That wasn't the action I was after. But I like it.
Wonder what you won.
That's what I mean. Yeah, it was. I like that. Uh, through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I uh, I lost my train of thought. I moved to adopt um, A and B, if that's appropriate. City Attorney, or do I have to read it out?
No, just item B. We've already done.
Oh, I'm sorry, thanks. My, my colleague over here says grace, item B, item B. Thank you.
All right, so I have a second. Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Escondola, a second by Vice Mayor Kirchner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Moody, I think you have what you need to carry it forward for now, correct?
You, thank you. I just would like to um, recognize um, Ms. Shannon Jones in the back. She, she's really one of our new house, she is our new housing analyst and really was instrumental in putting this together, moving it forward and working with everybody, so. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. All right, then we will bring this uh, back to the council. I just had it. Uh, item sixteen, future agenda items. Is there anything that has come up in tonight's meeting that the council wants to identify as a future agenda item? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to reports and communications and we will start with the city manager's report. Ms. Langley.
Right, thank you. So uh, last week, one hundred and nine uh, water violation notices were sent out to customers. And so those were the first warnings in terms of please adjust your sprinkler timers. The next one will have the fifty dollar uh, surcharge added to the bill. And we're expecting to be issuing those violation notices on a weekly basis. So, to our water customers out there, please check your irrigation timers to make sure that you are only watering on Mondays and Thursdays. Um, also, it was exciting to see the Burlington Grand Opening this uh, last week at the mall. And also related to water, the finance department is easing back into shut offs for non-payment of bills. And so they are um, reaching out to customers that um, have high balances to start the shut off program and then we'll expand it to um, all of the customers that um, have not been paying their bills. And then the Lincoln East Pacific Plan Annexation has been recorded, so it's official. So this is the area between Lincoln and Boge, George Washington and Sanborn. So we're excited to have um, that area into the city. And then just want to acknowledge um, Mr. John Boyer and Carol Boyer. So this couple, um, John, who is on the senior commission and does a fantastic job of bingo on Friday nights at the senior center. And then Carol Boyer, who volunteers for the police department and she is the biggest ambassador for the police department. She is out there talking about the citizens academy. And I mean, what a, what a couple in terms of serving the community. So I just want to say thank you. And if you've never done bingo on a Friday night, it is the most exciting thing and so much fun.
And she didn't win.
I did not win and I still had a great time.
What time? What time?
Um, well, it starts at six P M, but the doors close at five fifty. But if you want a seat, you need to be there about four forty-five.
Really?
Yes. And I understand that people start lining up about three thirty, even though the doors don't open until four thirty because it isn't that competitive.
And there's an age limit on this, correct?
No.
No.
Oh.
Eighteen.
Eighteen and up. You do have to pay for a bingo. You, you do win money, yes, and they ha- they're, they're very kind. If you've never played before, they have daubers that you can borrow. There's a lot of different games. Takes about two and a half hours in terms of playing, but it is the most fantastic entertainment. That's fairly cheap. Oh, there's about between seventy and eighty individuals every.
Usually have uh, average is seventy-five people.
And then also just a reminder for council, Waffle Wednesdays, the last Wednesday of the month. They always need assistance with serving. And so, John, I put that out there for, to get assistance. Uh, what time is Waffle Wednesday?
Uh, nine o'clock till ten thirty.
Last Wednesday. Yep. Yep, but thank you to all of our senior commissioners.
Just thank you guys.
That's it.
That's it. And thank you, Ms. Langley. All right, we'll come back to the council, Councilmember Escondola.
I have to follow that, Diana, thank you. Um, thank you. I know, thanks, Tony, you're welcome, right? John, thanks for all the wonderful um, volunteering. Now it's gonna sound kind of bleh, you know, just what I'm gonna report. Um, anyhow, um, participated in the Regional Water Authority um, board meeting and um, mainly was centered around the evaluation of the executive um, director, so working on that. Um, then I joined last week uh, through Aqua, the Association of California Water Agencies and R W A, um, I was part of a delegation that attended in DC for three days. Part of the business of that. And the priority was um, water and the impacts of the drought in the Sacramento Valley. Um, I was able to present the two projects of the outfall diffuser, the replacement for the wastewater treatment that was discussed a little bit this evening and um, I share, I, most of all of us on the council are pretty well informed on this. And secondly, um, on the electrical instruments improvements uh, for the water treatment facility. Um, asking for three million dollars for the outfall diffuser um, and five point three million. Um, our team put together these great uh, flyers that are um, easy to understand from any community member. If you'd like to have a copy, you're more than welcome to um, utilize these copies. Um, and a discussion uh, was about the community and the challenges to disadvantaged communities like ours and the agriculture industry as it all relates to um, this drought and the challenges that we are facing in California. Um, and uh, discussions in the delegate, delegation of the team, it was interesting to learn um, how much more hypersensitive of the discussion is because of the Colorado River on the southern part of California. Um, and the lack of water for that area is going to be impacting our northern region. Um, I, and those decisions are being made at the federal level, at the state level. And for us as a council, it's really important for us to engage um, within our state and federal representative. And for us as a council, it's really important for us to engage, um, within our state and federal representatives because there are, um, there's a lot of grants, there's a lot of funding, and these decisions are often made um, in very, uh, limited, uh, views and impact of discussion by people that are not like our, ourselves as city council members. Um, so I was, uh, with our delegation team, we met with high-level representatives. Um, we were at Congressman's Lamoff's office, um, who, who will be our congressman here in January. We also met with the U S Bureau of Reclamation, U S E P A. Uh, met with U S Senator Padilla directly and met with, um, uh, senior counsel for the, uh, for U S Senator Feinstein. Um, and multiple other representatives in all of those groups. And the two, the main things were asking about, uh, funding availability for our city for thirty million dollars and the five point three million for this electrical, um, improvements that we need for cybersecurity for our water treatment and also talking about our agriculture industry and, and, and the water rights and the allotments, um, and all those discussions that tie into also sites, uh, project and the need for sites project to be, um, built. But in that, right now, it's going through, uh, permitting process through the state water board and, um, hoping to ask why that process takes eighteen months instead of, it could be shortened to help, um, expedite, um, the ability for sites to, to, you know, break ground sooner than eighteen months later. Funding seems to be already focused and placed for sites, uh, project. Um, the J P A Executive Board and the Executive Director Jerry Brown has done an excellent job in securing and working on that piece. But anyone, any community member, us as a council supporting that only improves the chances of this to be moved forward because there are challenges in these, uh, water permits issues where environmental community, um, has a different stance on some of these things believing that water allotments or water banks, uh, might be a little bit more important in certain areas of environmental issues. For example, fishing or wildlife habitat. But there has been some major improvements in agriculture to help, um, with, uh, how we utilize and recycle and multi-benefit use of water. Um, but sharing these stories directly at the federal level, um, is a way for us to be heard and to be listened and to hopefully find some opportunity for us to get funding for these projects. And also, uh, to be, to consider, um, a larger, uh, watershed and banking of water in the Sacramento Valley specifically to building, um, additional ASRs, um, in the area. And, um, because our aquifer in the Sacramento Valley area seems to have, you know, we're robust in that, in the Sacramento Valley and hoping to, um, hoping that we can get more, um, of these groundwater built. Uh, but the rules be below under the ground are quite of an interesting navigation to try to figure all this out. So those were discussions. I don't wanna get too wee, you know, into the weeds. I'm still learning myself. Always go ask Diana, Ben and everyone else to make sure I'm on track, so I'm not, um, misguided what is necessary for our two projects. Uh, lastly, I wanna, um, say that, um, thank you to U B Citer Chamber Commerce. I attended, um, along with our mayor, um, the ribbon cutting Harmony Village. Um, I was also invited to the seventeenth annual, uh, multicultural women's dance, um, that was held at, uh, A K. And it was, it was great. Um, I was featured, um, I was able to speak along with other women leaders in our community. And, uh, Saint Isidore Church, um, does their annual Virgen de Guadalupe. It's a club. Um, they held at Queremes and Queremes is like a small carnival and they had food and music. So I was able to join them, um, both of them on Sunday with a hundred and what degrees, right? And it was, and I know the Peach Festival sounded like a great success in Marizil and I missed that. But, um, wish them the best in that, um, event. But that's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Give it a shot here.
Do you need a moment?
What?
Do you need a moment?
No, it's not gonna help. Um, so basically, I, you know, I've been sick. So I, I, but what I did manage to do in the last, uh, since last meeting I was able to was, uh, I was able to join a, um, trip that Secog sponsored to Salt Lake City. I mean, intent was to, uh, look at, uh, hands-on approach to different types of communities that they're building out there. And then that's some of their many multitudes of success stories. We met with, uh, many of the elected officials out there. We hit the ground running. It was a one-night trip. So, uh, from the moment we got to the airport, uh, we got on a train and we were on our first stop. And so they, they were waiting for us and they showed us a lot of different examples, um, primarily linking transit to housing and multi-use, uh, uh, situations. So we, we call that, they call it transit-oriented development, which is more than simply building a house close to a bus stop or a train station. The goal is to be able to get, uh, folks who live, you can live there, but reasonably not, um, be expected to need a vehicle. So if you don't need a vehicle, you're, you're, you hold, in theory, you're saving time, but you're also, we're helping reduce congestion out there and, and G H G emissions and, and all kinds of things. And ideally even improving quality of life. So they gave us some, they took us to several examples of that. There's also, um, a theory that they, that they have, um, put forward out there called a fifteen-minute city. Meaning that, um, they, they plan the development in such a way, uh, link up transit to it in such a way and not just train, not just, uh, buses, but also trains and, um, light rail. We rode, uh, we rode buses, we rode trains, we rode light rail, we even rode a, uh, a streetcar, um, as an example that for di, different neighborhoods in, in and around the Salt Lake City area, south, south of there as well. The fifteen-minute city is essentially, um, they plan it in such a way to where folks can get to basically anything you do work a day. Get to work, get to school, get to shopping, get to some form of entertainment or get to a transit facility all on foot or by within fifteen minutes. And, um, that's, uh, been quite successful out there. Let me see here. Some of the notes I took while bouncing down on a train. They are addressing equity issues by linking neighborhoods to transit and trails. And then, um, it's, it's funny when they do some of the surveys, they involve the community when they're building these developments. The, the developers received requests for amenities, you know, the, it, it's, it's, it's kind of convenient to be able to put a, a gym in a building. But they do, they just sit there and the equipment gathers dust and just like my Nordic track. And I understand how that goes, but they can say they have one, but their biggest request, number one was a coffee shop. Number two was ice cream and number three was pizza. That's what they want.
Bingo?
No, bingo. They got a room for it, though. Um, the num, the number one indicator of success story for the transit-oriented development was including a grocery store. And I know when we went to, uh, Washington, D C on the pre-trip, once again with Secog, the, uh, the developments that we saw that were be, were considered successful did include a grocery store. But I tell you, you drive down the road, you wouldn't know it. You look, you, it looks like you're driving through like a, a, a modern Victorian city neighborhood but tucked back in the corner underneath and it's all, and even the parking garages are disguised. Um, there is a big grocery store. So folks can, you don't just walk to the corner market, you go and you can get everything and within a hundred yards, you're home. Or whatever. So, I mean, that is kind of neat, really. Salt Lake City, I was really surprised. They, they called it, they referred to it as small lake city themselves. Because even though it looks like a big city, the population-wise and the demographic and whatnot, very similar to, uh, Sacramento area. And, um, U B City even had a, they were, our, our, our meeting housing is the same as Salt Lake City. Within a few thousand dollars. So I think that was obviously some of the motive for, that's why we chose that area. Uh, one interesting fact for Salt Lake City, the, and that mean the metro area, it's the best in the country for upward mobility. And the fact that the figures they gave us was if you were born, if someone was born in the lower twenty percent of socioeconomic status, they have the highest likelihood to die in the top twenty percent. And so through, through your life, you know, maybe not the choice of words, you're born and die. But however, you have a higher likelihood to get up to that top twenty percent of socioeconomic status right there in Salt Lake City. A major part is, uh, transit. And, um, not necessarily vehicles, but the, uh, the public transit because you create access. And you, um, provide access to these folks and they can get out there and, and hopefully thrive. Uh, I could go on and on, but it's, it was very interesting. They were very, uh, very professional. Um, some of the takeaways was, and this is similar to what we, what we learned in, uh, Washington, D C was as us as electives and the city and counties, as they develop, uh, or have plans for development is to, uh, what they learned was to stick to their plan, hold to it and, and, and don't settle for anything less. A lot of their elected officials, they, um, that was remarkable was that they owned, they had, this is our plan. Like we have the M T P S C S down in, in Secog, but they embraced it. They, uh, touted it, they promoted it and they considered this is ours. And they tell the state, you know what, we got this. And this, and they gave the state pushback. And the state finally said, okay, but we gotta see results. No problem. And then they've proven that they can do that. So it was a very good, very good trip, very good people, learned a lot, saw a lot. And, uh, hopefully we can, uh, take some of those lessons learned and apply them here. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good to have you back as well. So, Councilmember Vum Garden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, kind of a busy couple of weeks for me. Uh, I know, uh, first I'll talk about SURF, which is the Community Economic Resilience Fund. And Councilwoman Escondola and I, uh, the city manager, Doug Libby, Ben Moody, have all been participating in a process. And just to give you a quick snapshot, this is a one-time use of state general funds that will distribute six hundred million dollars to regions. There are thirteen regions in the state. We are one, uh, with eight other, excuse me, seven other counties. Lot, sort of in the same general vicinity as, as Secog. The objectives are to promote equitable and sustainable economic development, support inclusive economic planning that prioritizes equity, job quality and sustainability, and to align and leverage federal and state funding to maximize economic resilience. Of course, one of the biggest concerns here is one that I'm sure that we've dealt with with Secog as well is, does, does the funding, um, end up in the major metro, i.e. Sacramento or, or one of the bigger counties? So that's been a, a big concern. Uh, we're working with some really good consultants, Valley Vision, Longhotamia, who's a very familiar name to the area. Um, there's some subcommittees that are concluding their work and, and, uh, you know, I'm excited for what this might bring to the city as far as, again, some planning and some economic development. Second, uh, thing I wanna talk about is, uh, in the Regional Housing Authority, Mr. Curlin is a commissioner along with myself. I think you'll find, uh, that these, these notes are important. These are, um, affordable housing. And you've probably heard me over time ask many, many times, what, what does affordable housing really mean? And we received a report from Mr. Becerra, uh, the, the average monthly asking rent in, in Sutter County is eleven hundred and five, um, dollars. Okay? That means that through the, the, the studies that, that was presented to us that a, uh, a renter needs to make twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, um, to be able to afford a, uh, to rent, which is one point four times the state's current minimum wage. So when you start talking about affordable housing, uh, and you look at, you know, what our average, uh, wage probably is in this area, you can find where, where the delta is. And, um, so again, I know this council is extremely interested in trying to continue to provide a stock of affordable housing, which leads me to the Project Home Key meetings, which we continue to be involved with. And, um, there, uh, at the most recent meeting, we had the opportunity to listen directly to representatives, representatives from housing and community development. And while I think the, uh, the notion of, of, of trying to provide affordable housing, especially as it relates to veterans and it relates to senior citizens and our senior commission, um, we've brought that issue up, uh, on several meetings. Um, because the issue with senior citizens is they're being displaced by higher rents. And these folks are good, uh, good renters. They're not the types of renters that are gonna generally go in and, and not treat property well. Um, but Project Home Key, the, the, uh, the meetings continue. We have another one tomorrow morning. Um, there are a few things that continue to concern, uh, us as a council that we'll be reporting back on. Of course, the fact that Project Home Key three point O looks to be another one of the fifty-five-year, um, commitments. And with that, obviously, that, uh, that's something that we need to make sure as a city, um, that, you know, if we get involved with the Project Home Key, which could very well happen, that we really understand what that fifty-five-year commitment is. And housing and community development reps were pretty clear, um, that, that, uh, those, um, commitments are pretty strict for the fifty-five years. And it's interesting, Project Home Key's only been in place now since twenty twenty, so it's a pretty fresh program. But it is an option and it's one that we continue to explore and look forward to, again, continuing meetings. Again, the application period's in October, so we have a little bit of time to continue to figure out where we're going with that. Uh, LAFCO was canceled. Burlington Coat Factory, it's always, I think, pretty, uh, pretty good to see the, the volume of businesses that are coming to U B City and, uh, the opportunity to present these ribbon cuttings, I think, is really good. Uh, with that, uh, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with Homeless Task Force, we have our, we're narrowing down our, um, final list of locations that we're looking at for, uh, overnight, uh, parking for homeless. Uh, so we can give our law enforcement the tools that they need. Uh, in that arena, uh, we've got one more meeting to go and hopefully at that meeting, uh, the committee members, community committee members will have, uh, agreed upon, uh, a list of hopefully two to three, uh, uh, that we can bring back to council and take a look at. Um, what was brought up earlier, um, about the importance of, uh, access to the river, um, was a pretty good segue into what Sabuca's been doing, uh, lately. Uh, not only do we need access to the river, we need access in the river. And this point last year, there was a dredger parked out in the middle of the river that was, uh, uh, funded, uh, through a five million dollar grant to clear up access at the U B City Boat Ramp because, uh, boaters es- essentially couldn't get their boats in the river. And so something that was, uh, looked at was an additional, um, Feather River Sediment Project Two. And we were looking at, uh, hopefully getting ten million, uh, for that. Uh, Senator Nielsen and Assemblyman Gallagher were wholeheartedly behind it. Unfortunately, it was not on the, uh, the budget this year. So we're gonna go back to the drawing board on that. Uh, mosquito abatement, uh, we took a look at, uh, merit increases for employees. Uh, quarter of the review of, uh, the district, district-defined benefits plan. And then finalized budget approval for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, Intergovernmental Relations Committee was postponed this month. And what was, lastly, uh, it was good to see, um, uh, another business go into the mall, uh, Burlington. And, uh, with that, I'll close.
All right. Thank you. I'll bring it back to me and I'll try to be very brief tonight. Um, since our last meeting with me, it's, it seems to be a continuous, uh, meeting every week. I remember what you told me. It was coming, so it's there. Um, but, uh, I, uh, did attend Sabuca, uh, because you had a conflict there at the last minute and asked me, um, not only on, um, you know, just the sediment removal, but, uh, just a couple of other notable things that are ongoing. The FEMA map remapping has been, uh, completed with Sutter County and Butte County. And then also the other, uh, noteworthy item that came out of that was we all just voted on the new, uh, assessment district. And that vote did pass narrowly by about fifty-two percent. So what does that mean? The big two words, local control versus Sacramento. So that was the big push there. So, uh, that was the big takeaways from there. And Vice Mayor, you're doing a good job there. I don't think they were quite excited to see me as you, but, but we made it. So, um, So um Burlington, of course, great to see them and welcome them to town. Um and want to say something here that I said at the the ribbon cutting with fellow council members, and it's not just that few businesses is going in there, but really want to uh say thank you to the ownership and the leadership of the Yuba City Mall, how they're redeveloping that and attracting new businesses. Uh we just came through a pandemic where a lot of communities lost a lot of brick-and-mortar businesses, and they seem to be reinventing that mall. So uh we uh thanked them there and I just want to go on record tonight, say thank you because they're, they're doing a lot of great things there. Um the overnight parking uh to assist our law enforcement officers. We recap the meetings we've been, we've had uh really three thus far. The first one was uh understanding that we needed an overnight parking and uh they'll, they all came on board and understand the need for that. The second one was looking at rules and uh what needs to go on there because we heard some concerns uh from the community and others with what's gonna be the rules. And so uh been working through that and that is going under review as well by our legal counsel as well as the county legal counsel. Um then we hit uh the point in time that I kind of knew that we would probably hit, and that's the reality of selecting a recommendation because they're going to make, the out, hopefully the outcome of this is they make a recommendation to come back before the two bodies to figure out what we're going to do. Um hit the wall just like we did the very first time. So it's uh, there is not an ideal location. If we sat down and look at it, every location, you can pick it apart. So uh with that, didn't go out of there disappointed, just went out of there with, you know what, next meeting, we've got to make some decisions. You got a few weeks now to go back and think about it. If you come up with something that's the greatest thing since sliced bread, bring it because we'll talk about that. Uh but go talk to the landowner first or whatnot to make sure it's a viable option. So the idea is to uh hopefully come out of the last meeting, hopefully that will be the last one for this part of it, and then uh late August, second meeting of August, bring back hopefully a recommendation from um from that community advisory panel and uh hopefully it can go to the county soups and us about the same time, and then we can figure out what we're going to do. Because uh as I told them uh at the last meeting, still go back to the same beginnings, doing nothing's not an option. So we can't go through these meetings and come out of here and go, we've got nothing. We're going to have to work together with our community and figure out how we address this because we have an overwhelming community problem that we're dealing with, and that is the issue of of homelessness. And again, what we've stated here, homelessness is not a crime. It's a problem, it's an issue. We've got to get help to those that want help and will receive it, and we got to figure all this other stuff out. We're commonly unique, like all the other cities and counties in California. We're all trying to figure this out and no one has the, the right answer yet or the complete answer. So we're working through it and that's the expectations uh coming back. A lot of things coming up this week. Uh we will have transit and RWMA, RWMA, we're looking for the new executive uh director there, so hopefully uh that will all come together finally. Um and then um two things, I want to do the one, um uh this afternoon I had the uh privilege of attending Cotton Rossers uh memorial service. And I will tell you, three hours of laughing and crying because uh I don't really know if our community as a whole in this region understands what kind of a man and what kind of a legend he really was. But uh we have one gem of a family in the Rossers, and uh I just, but during this time, especially with the stampede and stuff coming up in a couple of months, uh I think our community needs to just reach out and embrace the Rossers, the Flying U Rodeo. There were people that flew in from all over the country there today. So uh, you know, as, I don't have my hat, but as Cotton would do, he would tip it. And uh, you know, as the, they said, live like cotton. My last comments, um I want to um thank our city employees. Uh they always do a great job from PD to Public Works. And because they support each agency or each division of our, of our municipality, uh there's not a one that can't do it without the other, so it takes us all. Uh but I had the opportunity this week and just want to say thank you to uh to our fire department. Uh I know the Fourth of July, we had a uh situation on Plumas Street that could have got out of control, and it took some creative out-of-the-box thinking to make sure that was all contained. And then uh just this past week, I was leaving my office, looked left, looked right, and all I saw was a big poof of uh black smoke. And it was down by AK School, went down there and I personally watched these guys keep this fire contained. I talked to the former chief here and he's like, yep, that's what these guys do and they're very good at it. And I just didn't want it to uh to go unacknowledged that uh that's two incidences, and I had the privilege of witnessing how they worked on the last one because they contained it to a single, single unit. So um Chief Alexander, please pass that along to your, your crews because uh you you have some great guys there and they are supported by everybody else in the city. So thank you across the board. And with that, uh if there's nothing else, then we will stand adjourned.
Hi Diana.
Happy birthday, Ms. Councilmember Shaw Harris. Happy birthday, Councilmember Shaw Harris.
Yubasutter dot lives local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe with lessons in person and personalized, instruments including guitars and amps, horns, strings. Strings for instruments and a myriad of music and sound equipment. Skip's Marysville Music Cafe.